Thirty and thirty first.
She'll be better off than Kim Kardashian. She never made it through the bar.
Oh, really?
She never went to law school.
Ms. Marigoni, are we cameras up and running? Looks like it. So we're gonna, we're gonna open the RDA meeting tonight. We won't do the, the pledge and invocation. Oh, yeah, just so you know, there, we need to do the RDA first, just to make it go correctly.
And she's staying there? You know, if all that works.
Okay, Ms. Marigoni, you ready to go? All right. Okay, we'd like to call to order our Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, please let the record show that all members of the RDA Board are present. Uh, we also have members of the city staff as well as members of the public. Um, we will open this meeting, uh, for some public comment, uh, concerning the RDA. Seeing none, uh, we will, uh, dispense with presentations and reports and move on to consent items. Number one, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the June fourth, twenty twenty four, RDA Board Meeting and Work Session. Are there any corrections or changes to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to action items. Number one, consideration of resolution R twenty twenty four dash zero three, approving your participation in reimbursement agreement with Williamson Riverdale Two LLC for reimbursement related to demolition and access for redevelopment in the five fifty West RDA. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you very much. Um, we'll, we will be discussing this ahead of, uh, the council action as, uh, was discussed in the work session for the site plan. This is, uh, consideration for a two hundred sixty thousand dollar, uh, tax increment reimbursement assistance for work done at the Panera site for the benefit of Panera as well as the benefit of the adjacent area. And so I'll be, uh, just briefly discussing that, um, with these slides. So just to give you a little background, and you'll probably hear this twice tonight, uh, now and with the site plan as well, but this is the old John Paris Furniture Site that is, uh, the subject of the Panera Site Plan Consideration. Um, it's, um, received various approvals, and we'll talk more about that in the council meeting, but it is ready for development. Um, as is the case sometimes, these developments have, uh, additional costs associated with them that make development difficult, if not infeasible. And so, uh, we often entertain requests for assistance to help with the costs associated with that development, and this is one of those cases. Uh, here's a picture of the existing conditions. You all know the site well. Uh, as, as I understand it, the building as it sits now has been vacant for, uh, at least three to four years. Um, and so it has a declining state, uh, both in terms of its occupancy and its productivity from a property tax and a sales tax, uh, perspective, uh, from our side. So the summary of the deal is, uh, is, uh, once I, uh, once again, I said, um, uh, one-time reimbursement of two hundred sixty thousand dollars of existing tax increment that has already been collected. So this project area has, um, is no longer collecting tax increment, and so this is tax increment that has been previously collected. But this reimbursement would be post-performance. That means that no reimbursement would be given to the developer, uh, until after the work that is outlined in the agreement is completed. And that timeframe to, for completion would be twelve months from the effective date. So if this was to be approved tonight and it was to be signed this week, we'd have an effective date of this week, and so it'd be about a year for them to make the completion of, of the work. And the completion is inclusive of not only the reimbursable items, which I'll discuss in a moment, but also of the entire project. So the whole thing has to be done to be eligible for, um, for the, uh, reimbursement. So those items that are specifically important to the agency to be reimbursed for is one demolition, um, obviously in a redevelopment scenario, uh, as a company is looking to develop a, a new store or a new site. The removal of existing infrastructure and buildings is a, an added burden to the project, um, versus a greenfield development or development that is, is absent of, of existing conditions. And so this does pose a greater, uh, financial burden to the project and is something that helps the city obtain its goals as well in terms of seeing the project come about and the access and, um, and other things that, uh, are important. The median is part of the, uh, approved site plan, but again, that's an additional cost associated with, uh, with the, the Panera proposed project. We don't necessarily want to be promoting medians in Riverdale City. In fact, um, the, the limited amount of medians we can have the best, the better. Um, but in this case, it does provide additional access, not only to the site, but with the cross-access easements that I'll talk about in a moment, it does allow for, um, additional access onto Riverdale Road in a, in a ride-in, ride-out scenario. So it's a safe maneuver and it's access that, um, has, has existed on this site, um, before and will continue to remain with the proposed site plan and the, and the access on the back, which is the last item for reimbursement. Uh, this is that, uh, access road on the east side of the property that would connect to the north to Starbucks and their access road. Uh, part of this, um, this reimbursement deal would require the developer to provide an access easement, uh, with the property owner to the north that would allow movement from the Panera site to the north to three hundred west. And, and then hopefully in the future to the south as well over Shake Shack, and that's something that's to be determined. But, uh, as part of a condition of this reimbursement, that they would need to build this access road and provide that access easement. And so the benefits to the, the city really are, uh, I think, um, uh, numerous in terms of the, the obvious, increased sales tax and property tax, taking a vacant building that has been unproductive for many, many years and facilitating the, uh, future development of something that's going to increase, um, both property and sales tax. Uh, there'll be jobs associated with this new property, uh, based on this, uh, assistance. It'll provide additional variety to our citizens, which is always a good thing and our visitors. Um, and then I think as important or maybe most important, if you can see on that, that map, you can see how that access connection on the east side there really unlocks that back property and helps us to, uh, to facilitate some future development in that large acreage of land there. So, uh, that is the summary of the proposal, and, uh, our recommendation is for approval tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Any questions from the RDA Board, uh, Board Member Hanson?
I've got a couple of questions. Um, the two hundred and sixty thousand of the tax increment that's already been collected, is that from the three fifty West RDA project area? Are we doing a loan or transfer from another project area? I couldn't re, I know we may have discussed.
This was that money that we pulled out of the, the housing portion that you previously approved. It's a portion of that. That's where that's coming from.
And I know a part of that, that we were okay with it because there's a chance, um, that it would relate to housing in that there could be some future housing put in, in that area back there.
That is correct.
But then that ties into my second question. So we don't have a guarantee at this point that Cetrubus is gonna participate and that we're actually gonna get that road all the way through.
We do not have a guarantee on.
So in that case, we are kind of risking it because it may not benefit the housing at all.
We are, but, but even in talking to Adam a little bit, the fact that those apartments are there, it gives another way, I mean, it does free up some stuff there. And from the Panera site, I mean, if you look at it from their side, that business could not operate without that connection in there. I mean, all they would have is the one option off of Riverdale Road. So this is crucial for that, that portion to be developed, so.
I can see that. It's, I think the hard part for me is just the unknown on the housing part because that was kind of why we approved.
And, and I agree, and that's still, the housing's gonna happen. I would say that's very likely.
But it won't benefit the housing necessarily.
Well, unless we can punch it through, you're correct.
Really hopeful.
Yeah, yeah. But I don't think it's, it's not a done deal. I, I, that's not, uh.
It's still in the works, I'm assuming.
Right, 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 right.
Yeah, and it's a, it's like eating an elephant one bite at a time. It is a complex, um, equation, and, uh, these things, um, present themselves differently, and so we just have to deal with them as they present themselves right now. This is presenting itself, so it's important to make a step today that would ensure that when, um, that time comes, we're already prepared to, to just punch it through, and we only have one more component to deal with.
And that by doing that, it really may give some encouragement because it would benefit Shake Shack also.
That is correct, yeah.
So that may help that it already exists.
Yeah.
Okay, that helps.
So it's really just building on success after success to the point where we know where we're going, and so these are just the steps on how to get there.
Thanks.
And I think it will, I think it will be even more apparent to Shake Shack that they are the only piece of that road that's not there, you know, is what I'm hoping.
Not benefiting?
Yeah.
And just one final comment, um, on the, uh, on the finances, um, there, I talked to Cody, there may need to be, uh, a budget amendment to actually get the previously appropriated money, uh, tied to this, but that'll be forthcoming.
And just by way of that median, we, we fought that fight. We battled it and battled and battled, and you'd us just not budgeting. We don't have a choice. We've gotta put that in. They just won't allow that, uh, the median, yeah, right in the middle of the road. We don't want it, but the, the mayor's been privy to some of those, and they just do not, they're not budgeting at all on that one. So it is what it is. We're not happy about it, but not much we can do.
Is Cetrubus talking to us yet?
Um, we have had some discussions, yeah.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Board Member Richter.
Yeah, just want to clarify, the two hundred sixty thousand, that was, it was up to that amount, right? Is that, is that the way the agreement reads it?
Or is it flat? Lump sum one time. And so we looked at all of the associated costs, um, with those items and, uh, came up with that number.
Okay. And then the, the elevation change, it looked like from the drawings that there was a pretty good, they're gonna put a retaining wall on the south side of that, pretty good elevation change to that.
And I'll cover that in the site plan.
Yeah, does that complicate the ability to punch through at some point, I suspect, or not really?
There'll be some engineering associated with that, that connection, yeah.
And they've looked at that, and I think we're okay on it. It's just the cost on that end's gonna be far more expensive than the other end, so, because of that elevation and that wall and different things, so.
Board Member Hawes.
And to follow up with, uh, Councilor Richter and, and the two hundred and sixty thousand, I thought I read that it, that they, it was hard costs, soft costs don't count, and so there will be an accounting for, for that. And if it, if their hard costs don't come up to that, they still get the two sixty?
We're confident that the costs of the work associated with the agreement exceeds two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, Adam Long, the RDA Attorney, wanted to put that in just for clarity, just to ensure that the things that, as we look back on this agreement maybe in the future, that it was sure that, that just the hard costs were being reimbursed.
Okay.
Any other questions? Board Member Arnold.
Move to approve resolution R twenty twenty four dash three, a statuer within the packet with the exception of the developer's agreement that has been changed with the I in Williamson to be the one that's on file if anyone wants to see it.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Yes.
Quickly, just to clarify, I just want to re, it says the cumulative amount of the reimbursement paid to the participant shall not exceed two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That still reads to me like, like there's some flex in that. Is it, it's, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. It is two hundred and sixty thousand, period?
Two hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Marigoni, will you please pull the board?
Board Member Richter?
Yes.
Board Member Stevens?
Yes.
Board Member Hawes?
Yes.
Board Member Hanson?
Yes.
Board Member Arnold?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh, moving on, any comments for the RDA Board Meeting? Seeing none, we would need a motion to adjourn. A motion?
A second.
And a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Okay, that meeting is adjourned. Okay, we will now move into our Riverdale City Council Meeting for Tuesday, July sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Please let the record show that all members of the city council are present, along with members of the city staff and members of the public. Um, we have asked Counselor Hanson to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise. Repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. I have asked Mr. Brooks to offer our invocation tonight.
Our dear Father, who art in heaven, we humbly bow our heads before thee this night and give thee thanks for the many blessings which thou hast blessed us with. We're grateful to live in the land which we do and to have those opportunities that thou hast given to us. We ask thee this time, Father, to please bless those leaders of our nation that they might be mindful of the needs of the citizens and the, the purposes of our country and that they will do what's appropriate and find peace and help our citizens understand the ways that our forefathers intended that we, we grow and we succeed. Please watch over them and bless them, especially in light of the tragic events of this weekend, and, and help those individuals recover quickly and support the family that was so tragically harmed by this act of this individual. We ask thee especially, Father, to watch over our public safety individuals and bless them and keep them in thy guardian hand and protect them in their affairs here locally. And we ask thee this night to bless our council that they might be mindful of the needs of our citizens and will be able to make those decisions that are gonna benefit them in a positive way. Again, we thank thee for all that thou hast blessed us with and do, do so in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. We'll now move on to public comment for the city council meeting. This is an opportunity to address the city council. But any concerns or ideas, no action will be taken during public comment. Uh, if you do approach the microphone, please state your name and your city of residence, and try to limit your comments to three minutes. Seeing none, we will move on to presentations and reports. Uh, for the mayor's report, I just have two things. Um, there is a, uh, an item that I need to read, from the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District. Let's see. They are going to hold a truth in taxation meeting, uh, on August nineteenth at six P. M. Their intent is to increase property taxes, uh, to increase the tax revenue. All concerned citizens, uh, or legislative entity representatives are invited to that public hearing for the tax increase, which once again is going to be held on August nineteenth at six P. M. Any concerns, uh, about the tax increase, uh, may be directed at the Central Weber Sewer Improvement District. Also, um, the only other thing I had to mention was, uh, I did have the opportunity on Friday night, I had some free time, and so I, uh, had the opportunity to go out and go for a ride with one of our police officers. And, uh, it was incredible, like, uh, it was, it was very eye-opening. I, I wrote about it a little bit in my newsletter I just submitted, but, uh, we all read the police reports, and we know, we, well, we think we know what they deal with, but, uh, I would encourage you to go for a ride with them if you get the chance. Um, and we didn't.
In the front or the back?
I, I asked where I should sit, and Sergeant Wright let me sit in the front, so, uh, I felt good about that. And we didn't, we didn't have anything crazy or anything too exciting. And, and in fact, we had some, some things that were a little bit heartbreaking and kind of just hard, and, and I watched the officers just be so professional and so compassionate and, uh, and it just, I mean, the things they deal with, and it was a pretty slow Friday night, I think, and, uh, um, it was just really interesting, and I would highly, highly recommend it. Um, we, we had a lot of different experiences. Um, I think Officer Torres was trying to show off a little bit because he, he had his lights on like every time, and we would just kind of go back him up and stuff, but, um, they, they do such a great job protecting the city. There, somebody was driving with that insurance. That's an interesting situation because they pulled them over in front of Canes, and, your car gets impounded right then. I, I didn't know anything about it. I asked Sergeant Wright a million questions, but, yeah, they pull you over and they say, hey, get your stuff out of the car, and stopper pulls up and loads the car, and they drive away, and your friends or someone have to come get you. So, um, anyway, it was, uh, it was very enlightening, and I would, I mean, thank you to Chief Warren for helping set that up, and if you get the chance, it's, it's well worth your time. So I would recommend it. I am actually planning on trying to do something with the fire department this month because I don't want them to feel left out, so, uh, and I, I guess this would be the right time to also, I, I asked Chief Shaly to include, include a little more detail in his reports, kind of something along the lines of what the police department does, so we can have a little better idea of what they're doing and where they're going. And he did that this month, and so I appreciate that. If, uh, he's, yeah, if you'll pass that on to him. But, uh, anyway, and that's all I have for the mayor's report. Number two, city administration report. Mr. Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. The department head's reports are in your packet. Do you have any questions on any of that stuff that's contained there? I got a number of them here, but, uh, Chief Shaly couldn't make it, and I was hoping to have Rich here because I wanted to give an update or a report on the old glory days, but I don't know where he is. He's generally, uh, lets me know if he's not gonna be here, but I haven't heard from him, so. But if you have no questions on that, by way of anniversary dates, um, the high man on the totem pole here is, is, is Officer Wright, Sergeant Wright with twenty-one years, so kudos to him. Uh, Steve Wetton is one of them that we were going to celebrate tonight, but he is out of town, and Steve has hit his ten-year mark. And last but certainly not least, our favorite, she's kind of a traitor, left us to go over to the police department, but, uh, Shaly is here tonight, and she hits her five-year mark, so we do have a certificate for her, Mayor and Chief, if you guys want to present it.
Yeah. You wanna say, we'll let you say it first, and then we'll give her a certificate.
Okay, sweet. Well, as you can see, uh, we have a few officers here, and I was like, hey, thanks for coming, and their response was, we come to support our boss. So, um, uh, like, like Steve mentioned, she's been with Riverdale City for five years. She was with two years with, uh, here is the, uh, recorder, and then she's been with us for three. We were lucky to steal her over to the police department. Uh, prior to that, she had about six years at Weber County Attorney's Office as a clerk, so she has a pretty good background in the criminal justice system. Now, the one thing I'll say about our support staff and especially Shaly, is if you were to look at police departments our size and look at the support staff, the number of employees they have, typically they have anywhere between four and six individuals, um, to go over some of the things that, we have two. Um, Shaly, she does our evidence, she does our case management, she does our report, uh, reports as far as, uh, transcribing them and getting them into the system. She sends it off to the county attorney. She's our TAC. Um, I mean, the list just goes on. And so like, just as an example for evidence, we go to an evidence meeting, and some of these places, they have at least one person, that's their only job. Some of them have two or three. Um, and so she just does an amazing job. Um, I equated her job when she took it. I was like, look, I, I'd known her for a while because she was here as an employee here, and I knew her at the county. But, uh, I equate her job to juggling and riding a tricycle at the same time, you know, and, uh, it's just a lot of work to manage. And beyond the job that she does with all the, the skill, she's really raised the bar. Uh, we were doing good before, but she's, she's, she's did a lot with our evidence to make it better. She's done a lot with our, our, our video evidence, the way we track it, um, so we, we make sure it's organized and professional, and when they get it, it's easy for the attorneys to view. So she's, she's continuing to raise the bar and make us better, and she makes us all look good, um, in the police department. So the other factor is beyond that, uh, I think if I would invited the whole police department, you'd probably see the whole police department here. And the reason for that is, is she genuinely makes you feel good. Um, a lot of you guys know her personally, and she just goes out of your way to be kind, and she's considerate, and she's always doing something nice for somebody. I've never seen her say a foul word about anyone, never seen her complain, argue. Um, she's just a really genuinely good person, and it really helps build the morale and the cohesiveness in our department. So I can't say enough good about her. She didn't want to do this, but I think she should say a few words.
I don't want to.
I always put her on the spot. You don't have to if you don't want, but the mic's yours, but I will say, she is just, like I said, she's amazing, and, uh, we really, really value what she does for us, so I'll turn the time over to her.
I like working here. Sorry, it's, it's a great place to work. I appreciate it. I love it. I have that position also. I just miss criminal justice. I, so it doesn't feel like it's been five years. I love it, so, yeah.
Well, that being said, Karen.
Yeah.
She was gonna bring her mom, and we were trying to get her mother to come.
Well, I'm, I'm glad, uh, Chief Warren brought it up about the support staff. I was, I was talking to him, and I, I do take some flak from other police or from other mayors about that we count air police well, which, uh, pays off for us because we get better police officers. But, uh, anyway, um, Chief Warren was explaining to me how these other departments do have, you know, four to six, you know, support staff in the office with them, and we get by with like two. And so that allows us to put more people on the street, um, to have, you know, four guys out in the evenings or whatever, and to have, have, you know, maybe a little bit better pay than, than some of the other ones, and that allows us to keep our staff full and career the best. And so by Shaly doing her job well, it, it benefits the entire city, and so we appreciate that. Um, thank you so much. Um, fantastic. Uh, this is five years. I hope there's a, a thing in here for you.
I got some. We're good.
I'm not sure which boss she likes better. It might be Steve. I'm pretty sure it is. It's my boss, too. All right, thanks, guys. Good job.
Okay. Well, moving on, our staffing authorization plan is in your packet. Just by way of, uh, information, the, two of the individuals that we hired during that hiatus, um, with the fire department that we hired as part-timers have converted over to full-timers. So two of those positions have been filled. They're still in the process of doing more, so that is ongoing, but that's why that number looks higher than it is. It, it will hopefully level out soon enough. The last thing I had, and I'll leave this a Brandon a little bit, just, uh, community development report. Things, things been hopping. I know I tell you guys that every month, but it has been busy. We have been swamped with, uh, community development, all kinds of stuff going on as the weather, you know, gets better and, and some of these projects, uh, come back online, you know, with the interest rates. Um, things are, things are changing. We have some good reports, but Brandon, you want to just give them just a brief update on?
Yeah.
Where we're at on things?
So, um, I think two of the, the, uh, longtime listeners is Chuck E. Cheese and, uh, Tesla, so we have some dates finally from them. Uh, Chuck E. Cheese is looking for a grand opening around September fifth, so they are two weeks ahead of schedule, believe it or not. Uh, and so hopefully we'll have an event to all go to, uh, early in September. Tesla is also getting close to completion. The general contractor should be out of there by the end of July, turning the building over to Tesla, and they should be having their grand opening, uh, sometime in August. So we're working with those companies, um, respectively to coordinate all of that, and so that'll be fun, two longstanding projects that'll see completion. Uh, you've seen work happening at the Kia dealership in the back and certainly the Honda dealership, uh, so those are ongoing. And then as Steve mentioned, uh, one of the primary focuses that he asked me to look at when I started was to try to get some of these, um, projects that were previously approved kind of off the dime and moving, and, and that's, that's a lot of work because there's a lot of challenges, but, uh, Panera, I think, uh, tonight is one of them, and hopefully we'll see some others happening here shortly. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to, uh, item F, consent items, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the June fourth, twenty twenty four council work session and council meeting. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to action items. Number one, consideration of resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty-four, renewing a contract with Robinson Waste for garbage and recycling services. Mr. Douglas.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think you've all seen this one before. It's an annual one that we do annually. Um, we've been lucky, I think, to have Steve with us for so long. Um, he continues to like working here. Um, we love working with him. I think some of the highlights is the, usually the fall cleanup and the spring cleanup are huge hits with the residents. I don't know if Steve likes them as well anymore because it's taken I don't know if Steve likes them as well anymore because it's taken more and more days every year to get all that picked up. We're on two days now instead of a three quarters of a day we started with. But I hear a lot of good feedback. I hope you guys hear that as well for the curbside pickup. And I'm sure Steve, he loves to talk, so I'd like to have him come up and give you guys a minute of his time. So if you guys have any questions for me, I'll answer them. If not, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Okay, yeah, come on up, Steve. Just state your name at the microphone and.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Could I invite the junior associate partner of Robinson?
Yeah. Yeah, we can have this other gentleman up here. I'm not familiar with him.
My son Blake.
Moustache is required.
Well, thank you. We're grateful for the opportunity that you've allowed us to be your garbage man for all these years. And what a great association it's been. And we appreciate it, all your support and whatnot. I can give you a quick update if you would like for a minute. We kind of some exciting things. We purchased the property that Recycle Earth had on Midland Drive. They used to, where we'd take your recyclables. And so we've reopened that under the Ogden Transfer Station. And it's a Robinson Waste company and it's, it's exciting. We're, we've opened the C and D transfer part of it and just accepting construction and debris right now for transfer. We plan to open the recycle center up sometime in August. So that will bring, right now, we're having to truck all that to Davis County, as you know. Since he shut down, he shut down about six or eight months ago. And, and so we're excited for, to get that back going. And save us, you know, having to transport it to Davis. And I think give us a more efficient recycling for the city. We're also began construction over there for a state-of-the-art transfer station for MSW. And we're excited about that. That should be open sometime the end of first quarter 2025. So a lot of, a lot of fun things going on. And we feel like it'll be a big benefit, huge benefit for the cities of Weber County and for the residents. We feel like more stability. It's been a little unstable lately. It's not, are we going to get a raise? It's how, or how many times will they increase the disposal rate? But so, yeah, we're hoping for a little more stability like it used to be. And, and the, you know, we went, we went what? I mean, we went a decade, maybe decade and a half with stable rate on disposal. And then in the last seven, eight years, nine years, we've just seen, you know. And some of that's to be expected, but I hope to kind of stabilize that a little bit. So those are what's, that's what's happening with us. Exciting stuff. Any questions?
Yeah, Counsel Haas.
I know that I've seen a couple of people asking about, about getting like construction roll-offs for cleanup or whatever. You know, when, if they're doing a remodel or whatever. And we don't have, I don't imagine that we have a contract with this, through the city to, for you guys to provide that for our residents either at a certain fee or a, or whatever, right?
No, we've, we've opted to do the spring and fall. You know how we used to do it at the parks? And, and that was a little bit cumbersome for park patrons. Because we'd take up the whole park for the whole day. And so we, and, and we did have people, you know, it was funny how people would bring their stuff over. You know, tied to the roof of the car. So we opted to do this curbside thing. I think, I think it's been very successful. But no, we, we provide that obviously, Stacy, but we.
Yeah, that's an, that's something that you provide. We just don't have, we have never negotiated a specific rate for our residents, right?
So if somebody calls in, what we would do, we would, we would tell them there's many contractors, but we also give them a reference to Steve. They can call him directly, set up the service. He has set fees on that and then the dumpage on it. And we've had a lot of residents use that. You know, we've also used that service during like emergencies. We've had Steve bring us roll-offs. He has a very large selection of roll-offs. So any of the residents that want to do that, they've been serviced well that way. But we don't have a set, his, you know, the pricing would be through him as Robinson Waste, not through the city.
And is that a good way to refer them to you or should we just refer them straight to?
You can refer them straight to them. They'll handle them either way. Like I've never heard a complaint back about them if they wanted to do that. And we have had several residents do that, you know, just here, not even in that long, but it works well.
Anybody else? I will tell you, Steve, it's kind of funny because we go to these conferences for cities and there's Republic and Waste Management and they, they have booths and kind of, they have kind of cool stuff at these booths. And we go up to them and it's always kind of awkward because we don't use them. But when they see our badges, Riverdale, they forgive us for using Robinson. Because they, they, they know, but now they know you don't live in Riverdale. Like I said, well, I said, he's a longtime Riverdale guy. And one of them said, well, he doesn't live in Riverdale anymore. And I was like.
But Rochelle does.
Rochelle does.
Okay. Okay. Well, anyway, they, so they've got that figured out. The pressure's turning up just a little bit. We take their swag.
We still kill them on service.
Yeah, we, we told them, I said, it's, it's not happening, but we take all their swag and just leave, you know. And just, but they know we're sticking to the Robinsons. So and, and it's along those same lines, you know, we have a tow company we use and we've used them for a long time because they give such good service. And it's kind of nice to have a go-to trash hauler that, you know, has done so good for the city just forever. And the curbside, the curbside thing is, it's popular. People have figured out that they can put their stuff out. Luckily for you, there's a group of people that goes out the night before and gathers some of it up. So you don't have to get it.
There's the steel guy, although he disappeared last year.
Not just the steel guy.
Really?
Residents.
No, it's, it's the.
They clean some of them out.
Yeah.
One man's trash is an administration.
Meet one day and then they pick up the next. I like it.
Anyway.
Steve, can you kind of touch just for a second on how you survey the drivers?
Yes, we do, we do regular route audits with all the drivers. So the supervisor, there is a supervisor for the residential crews, one for the commercial crews and one for these roll-off crews. And the residential has, has gotten bigger. And so he's got an assistant and they do regular route audits where it consists of several things. They'll go out and, and observe the driver. One of them's an observation where they just go out and observe them without them knowing. We've got places we hide and see, see that they're safe. And see that they're, you know, doing the job as we've coached them to do. You know, the cans are standing, there's no trash left. And, and just kind of the quality is there. See how they're running their routes. And then we do an equipment audit as part of that. Then they'll jump in the cab and, and they'll actually drive the equipment, make sure it's operating the way it's supposed to. Sometimes drivers don't like to give up their trucks. You know, they get, and, and maybe it's not operating at peak efficiency. And so they identify that and, and then they do a, a ride along where they'll ride with them and, and observe how they're handling the equipment. And, and then we also do a, we keep track of every call that we get. The last one I have here is We had 44 calls and we had one that we, was our fault, that we just missed. Most of the calls we get are, you know, they, and I think it's, most of them are honest. I think they think we haven't got there yet. And we have, so they just got it out a little bit late. We don't argue, we just go get it. But so that's pretty good. We have a 99.97 compliance rate with our service in Riverdale. So that's, that what you was looking for?
That was. There's just been a little bit of stuff on social media that was concerned. And I think that helps council understand how you're out following the drivers, taking, make sure they're doing what they're supposed to do.
And honestly, guys, if you ever see anything that I need to be aware of, please give me a call personally and we'll, we'll get it handled.
I had a person approach me knowing I was on the council. How you doing, Blake? And don't want to leave you out here. And they were in a rental house and they didn't know the times because they, the recycle comes at like six, between six and 6:30. Then the regular black can is picked up about 11-ish. And so they just put them both out and one was picked up. And, and they didn't understand and I happened to see him as I was going to work. And I says, you know, I think he's already been here for the blue can. And it explained and he called and you came and got it anyway. And which was, I took my hat to you because that's, that's kind of, you know, just thinking you can just put it out in the morning is not working anymore because of the dual way you pick it up. So that was, that was really decent of the, you know, and that's just one example that I happen to see in my area. Anyway.
Yeah. And thanks for help educate. That's what we try to do is just, you know, if you're, if you're wondering if we're having a holiday, just put it out. It's not going to hurt anything. When in doubt, just put it out. And we, we try to coach them to get everything out by 6:00 AM because the seasons fluctuate a little bit, you know, there's more trash right now. So we're a little bit later. And then as it lightens up in the winter, we're a little bit earlier. And so people try to time us, that doesn't work so well. But residents are great. I mean, they're, for the most part, good to, good to coach up and work with, so.
Very good. Anything else? Okay, Counsel Arnold.
Move to approve resolution 2024-24, stated within the contract, giving, renewing the contract with Robinson Waste for garbage and recycling services.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Ms. Mary Gorme, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Yeah. Thanks for all you do. Okay, thanks, guys. All right, we'll move on to item number two. Consideration of resolution 2024-25, approving an interlocal agreement for building inspection coverage. Mr. Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, this is an interlocal agreement with Weber County. In 2024, the Utah Legislature passed some new law. It's in 15A1105. And it essentially is trying to solve a problem frankly, that doesn't really exist across the state and certainly doesn't exist in Riverdale. And that is mandating a response time to building inspection applications. And in the event that a city can't get to that inspection within three days, then they are to have a list of at least three, for Riverdale, it's three. Smaller cities and in the class three, four and five counties, I think, have to have at least one. But for Riverdale, we, we are required to have at least a list of three entities. It could be private entities or it could be other building officials and building inspectors in other jurisdictions that the building permit applicant, applicant could then call on to perform the building inspection. So right now we have two, we have Schum's Coda and WC3. And so this interlocal agreement actually creates an agreement between us and Weber County wherein each of the parties provides that, that inspection service for the other party. So we would able, we would be able to use Weber County as the third member of our list. And they would also be able to use Riverdale as, as one of their members as well. And so it's, it sets forth the terms and conditions of that relationship. Essentially, it's up to the responding party to determine if we are able to get to the inspection. So if an applicant in Weber County was to apply for an inspection, they weren't able to make it within the three days, then they, and they chose Riverdale City, then we would have the option to either take that inspection or not, given the limitations on our resources. Also, the same goes for Weber County. If they aren't able to make that inspection, then they would deny that. There is a billing rate that we are responsible for in the case of all of our, all three parties on that list. It's, in this contract, it's $85 plus reimbursable mileage at the IRS rate. So that's essentially putting us in compliance with state law. And again, it's, it's kind of a solution looking for a problem. We do pretty good in terms of our inspections. It does get busy at times and so, so we do sometimes have to use Schum's Coda or WC3. But in the most, in most cases, we're, we're on it. So that's the agreement and, and due to the fact that it puts us in compliance with state law, we recommend approval.
Any questions with the council? Counsel Stevens.
Yeah. They only can use not, let me make sure I understand this. That they have to use the Riverdale designated entity or party that we use to inspect. And it's only if it's more than three days then they can use one of the others. Is that, it's, so it's not for like they can, they're picking whoever they think is going to be most favorable.
That's right.
Okay. There is none of that. It's only after in this case, say, Riverdale doesn't meet that three-day timeline. Is that it?
That's right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, a motion would be in order.
Move to approve resolution 2024-25, approving an interlocal agreement for building inspection coverage.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Mary Gorme, will you please pull the council?
Counsel Haas?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, consideration to approve the final site plan request for Panera Bread Restaurant located at approximately 4122 South Riverdale Road, as requested by Peregrine, Peregrine Consulting and Panera Bread Group. Mr. Cooper.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we have Russell Haight representing the Peregrine Consulting Firm. And so if there's any questions that you have that I can't answer, I'm sure he will be able to do that. So as Mayor said, this is the final site plan consideration. We've talked about this in the RDA meeting, so you've seen a little bit about this already. This is the old John Paris Furniture Site. It's about 1.19 acres. The building's been vacant for some time now. And so the proposed site plan would, would build a 3,800 square foot Panera Bread store on the site with, with the associated site work and drive-through lanes, which I'll kind of show in a minute. In our review, we looked at a number of things associated with the code. I've listed those there. Of note are some of the parking requirements and also the water and sewer requirements. Here's the existing conditions. You all know it well. You drive past it many times a day, I'm sure. The full construction drawings or site plan drawings are in your packet. This is just a snapshot of what the site looks like. Again, it's the store there in the middle. The code requires about 38 parking stalls and I believe there's 51, so it's parked well. The queuing around the drive-through, they have actually two lanes. One is a full drive-through and one is a, is a rapid pickup. And so that allows for multiple points of contact. If you place an online order or a phone order, then that has its separate lane. And so I think that creates a lot of efficiency on the site. There is to be a reciprocal easement and an access alley on that east side to allow for connections to the Starbucks to the north. Some special considerations on this site are the elevations. So there is a significant retaining wall to the east. It varies in height, but I think the highest it gets is about eight, nine feet. And so it'll be a significant wall to hold that hillside back on that east and south side.
uh, in addition to that, um, there are some water connections that are to be made. Uh, I, I only bring this up because we've had issues, um, in this area before. And so I wanted to make folks, um, comfortable in the fact that this will be a requirement of development and it will be handled appropriately. And then the median is associated, uh, with this project as well to ensure that there's sufficient access onto Riverdale Road in the right in, right out. And that was a UDOT requirement. Uh, but it does preserve that access and it does give the site some more options uh, in terms of, um, its, its, uh, movement. So the planning commission heard this, uh, this, uh, petition and, um, it recommends approval to you all based on the findings of staff. And so with that, uh, we also recommend approval subject to the, the normal provisions of, of getting a permit. Uh, there will be a stormwater, um, application that needs to be made and there still is yet to be the transfer or purchase of water. So those are some things that are still outstanding that we will, uh, navigate as we go through the pre-construction process and the permitting. That is, uh, the presentation. Any questions?
Counselor Hanson?
I just had one on the water one. Because of that issue. When I was reading it and maybe I missed it and then you know how on the plans it lists the notes on the side? Um, and maybe I just didn't look at the drawing close enough. It did specifically mention capping off the sanitary sewer, but it didn't specifically mention capping off the culinary. That I saw unless I was looking at the wrong page, but maybe it was in the drawing. It just, I felt like it should have been in the notes. I just want to make sure, even if it's not there, that it's been clearly communicated that they've got a. It does talk about hot taps.
We, we've had those discussions. They're aware of all that.
Okay. That's the main thing. I just didn't see it in the actual plan.
And Russell, that's your understanding as well, uh, as the, as the drawer of the drawings.
Yes, they will cut into that road and then tap it.
They'll hot tap it and then they'll also.
Tap the, the existing.
Tap it. Okay, perfect. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Seeing none, a motion.
Oh, it is. Okay.
Different sheet than the utility sheet.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry, ma'am.
No, that's fine. Thank you for finding that so quickly. Uh, Counselor Arnold?
Move to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four dash, uh, no, take that back. Move to approve final site plan uh, for Panera Bread Restaurant is stated within the packet.
Motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Marigoni, will you please pull the council?
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
All right, very good. We're excited for this. So, uh, it's been a long time coming. You're right. So, yeah, let's get that thing done. All right, move on to the comments section. Any comments from the city council for tonight?
I just had a question.
Okay.
On your report about the central sewer?
Yeah.
Did they say how much they're thinking of increasing it?
Yes, they did. Um, that wasn't required. Did I mention that? But I do, I do have, it's, it's about a dollar a month. On, on an average house in Weber County. Let's see if they have the percentage here. They didn't, they didn't put the percentage in this notice. Yeah.
At about a dollar.
Yeah.
And then I assume the public hearing is at their building?
I think it's about eight percent for some reason, but yeah. The public hearing is at their building, yes, on, uh, eight nineteen at six PM. I do, if anyone's really interested, they did provide some other information about how they have more miles of pipe and take in more gallons than other sewer districts per the number of employees that have, they're very efficient out there compared to the other, uh, districts in the state. And I, I actually will forward this to you guys just because it's got some interesting stuff on it. Good question. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, uh. Counselor Richter?
Just a question perhaps for Mr. Douglas. Um, can you just add, you kept me a little bit on the, on the responsible areas of responsibility for, for, we had some tagging there on the sound barrier wall there on Parker. Is that a UDOT thing and how do we?
We're, we're already working on that.
Yeah, I just was curious how that.
The mayor had passed that on, not only the, the big blue one. I drive by there every day and I've not even noticed that until the mayor caught, brought that to my attention, but even further down by his, uh, entry and exit way there, when they've come in and they redid that one, it's kind of a gold color against that brown. It just looks tacky. So we've reached out already and, uh, Steve May's working on that. We're trying to get those fixed. So that shouldn't take long.
If it's private property, then the property owner will be responsible for it. If it's city property, we take responsibility for it and paint it. Sometimes along the trail in certain instances, because we have a couple of areas here that are high priority and they put some pretty bad stuff. We have painted some of the UDOT stuff under the bridges just to expediate that because of the number of traffic and kids we have and what they've put on there. And then like the trail tunnel under thirty-first street and that type of thing we'll do. But we working with the police and us, we usually get it taken care of fairly fast. The UDOT ones will sometimes a little slower. They've been cleaning up some of it for him fairly good. So hopefully it's fairly quick.
Can you come up to the mic, chief?
Just, just to add what Sean said. Um, with private businesses, the legislation put something into law probably about three, four years ago that basically said if you're a private property owner, business, residential, whatnot, you only have X amount of days to basically remove the graffiti and then you would actually be subject to a crime, I guess you'd say. And so we, we've never had to resort to that, but it did give us some teeth to say when we contact businesses and usually it's businesses, not residents that we're dealing with, that, hey, you know, there is this law. We're making you aware of it. Can you please just get it done as soon as possible? And then we've had some pretty good compliance with that. Um, we encourage our officers and then Public Works is probably one of our number one advocates. They usually let us know if it's out of their jurisdiction and maybe in a business so we can get on top of it. But, uh, feel free to send me an email anytime you see stuff that's not been taken care of. Mayor Mitchell's always on top of that as well. He gets a lot of complaints and, uh, the more eyes and ears we have, the better. And then sometimes we just try to be patient with them, but we do follow up and kind of encourage them to do it based upon that law. And we've created a little bit of a pamphlet for those guys. But we've, we've never had to issue a citation, but it kind of gives us a little bit of teeth to encourage them to do that. Cause in the past, the businesses like, yeah, 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 we'll get to it and we can get to it. So anyways, any other questions for, for that?
I appreciate that. I noticed in, in the, in the, uh, patrol report, you had a couple of things that, that perhaps mentioned some.
We actually caught the guy over here, so over by ten fifty, you know, usually I, I encourage our, uh, police officers to take a report. So we can photograph, a lot of times we can go into the area because it's usually a kid that lives right there. And we've had some pretty good success. So I try to, uh, get the police officers to take the report, maybe get on top of it. And then I turn it over to Steve May to kind of work with the businesses to get it removed. So.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, don't ever hesitate to send the mayor or I or Steve an email and we'll, we'll get on it.
Thanks, chief. I have, I have to admit, I've been a little hesitant about the sound wall because they did such a horrible job down by my neighborhood. And then almost the graffiti that's there is kind of a light, light blue. And I'm like, it almost looks better than what they're going to do to the, I, I don't want it to look like LA, you know, just anyway, so.
I think Steve was gonna try and talk to him about that. Was that correct?
Yeah.
For years.
Yeah.
They'll come in and they'll paint like a light blue on the cement. So it's just a light blue block and it's like.
Yeah.
At least the other one had some style.
So some of what happened on that is back when the, when it was done through the county. They were, I think they were getting donated paint.
Yeah.
And so whatever was on the van.
Yeah.
That was maybe in the same color tone. It was good. I mean, you can't always match it, but I think we did ask that they try and do a little better. So.
I, I would think that UDOT has, I don't know, they buy how many thousands of gallons of that brown paint every year if you could just send a little bit up. So we'll see how it goes, but just know I'm very sensitive about that because I see that one every day on my way to work and the, the old one. Anyway, anything else from the council? Oh, yeah, counsel.
Just wanted to, to pass along. You can pass this along to Rich, the, and the crew that did the old glory days. And, uh, I went over there to the Saturday and, and he was sitting as the reception in the gym, you know, at the community center where I would go. So after I was done, which if I see him there, it usually means somebody didn't come in or called in sick or something. And he says, no, this was scheduled. I said, why did you schedule your, and, and he, but he gave me, we had a long talk about all of the app, all the issues that maybe we don't see, we just enjoy that goes into putting on an event like that. Now, he was there because everybody had put in so much time leading up to it, that once it was done, people wanted to take time off and vacations and different things. And so he was filling in to make sure other people got time, time off. But, um, you know, and I, I commented to him. By the way, I don't know if you saw this, I mean, they did a, they were reaching out to try and get to businesses, trying to get entries into the parade. And the struggle they have is a lot of the people who would normally come forward to, you know, Fourth of July, it's a holiday for them and businesses have to pay time and a half for their employees to show up. And so it's, it's, um, it's, there's challenges, built in challenges. And then the configuration of the park, the smallness of it, the, the fireworks and what they can and can't do. But I told him, I said, man, that fireworks show was incredible. And essentially what it is, is he says, I have a budget. And the budget only pays for so many shots. And so it was kind of boring a few years ago is because they were stretching, they says, okay, we want thirty minutes. And you only paying for this number of shots so that it's spaced out and it gets boring. So he says, okay, do it in twenty minutes. It got a little bit, it got more exciting. And he says, all right, knock three minutes off. And so they had the same number of shots in seventeen minutes. It was spectacular from my perspective. If, if any of you saw it, but I just thought, okay, that's rich, taking some effort, observing, seeing what you can do better. And then next year, taking, you know, lessons learned and, and, and that takes, uh, you know, there's a lot of corporate knowledge in those people who've done it year after year to try to make that a better event and bigger and the cars and this year and different things. So it, it, you know, tip the hat to, to those guys who did a pretty incredible job. And he kind of let me in on some of the behind the scenes challenges that they're dealing with. And it's to pull off that kind of an event year after year takes some, takes some effort and planning and, and not just Rich, but the whole group that does that. Tip the hat to him.
Thank you.
With as much money as we found, we might as well up the number of shots. I think that's great.
We did approve, it, it goes up every year. Like several years ago, it was stuck at seventeen thousand and it was, our show was going down every year. And so he asked if he could slowly raise it a little bit. So anything else from the council? Okay. Anything from the city staff? No. Okay.
Yeah. What just mentioned, I, I noticed you guys squint, you missed my conversation with the mayor here. We're actually looking to replace that TV to get you something a little bit bigger. But as we went out and approached the Music Village over here does our sound system for this and they'll do a lot of these electronic things. They actually proposed to us that we get monitors, individual monitors for you guys. We hadn't really thought about that. But so, so we're in the process of getting a bid on that. And if that turned out really nice and it looked good, I, I think we can afford it. It's just a matter, do we do that or we do this? But we're going to get something better for you, just so you all know. We're working on it.
Can I give you a suggestion on that?
Yes.
So Draper City, I don't know if they still do it, but when I lived there, they did it. The problem with the ones they did, it went up above the council members.
That's what we're looking at.
I love that idea.
See if we can get some lower ones that sit down in that aren't going to interfere. That's what we're working on now.
Block their face. Then you can say whatever you want, I guess.
Right. Yeah. But sooner we'll have something for you, whether it's those or this.
In between, I don't know. I don't know how many you're going to get, but even, you know, even just three or four or whatever.
Yeah.
Be good. Thanks.
Okay. Um, I just had a couple of things. Uh, I just want to reiterate what, uh, Counselor Stevens said. Old Glory Days, it does take, it, it takes everybody in the city. I mean, Public Works is involved, the police, the fire, Rich, you know, has his hands completely full. So please, Mr. Brooks, just pass on our gratitude to them. Um, this year was, I, I got so many compliments this year about it. Um, the car show was a huge hit. The fireworks were incredible. Um, my whole family comes in from all their cities to, to see the Riverdale ones. And we went up to Weber State on, uh, on Sunday night and, uh, I had little nieces and nephews were like, yeah, that's just not good like Riverdale's, you know? And, uh, they probably spend way more than we do because they're shooting the big shells. But I mean, if you can make the effort to get into the park here, because we shoot the lower ones. Yeah, I will put ours up against any show. It's, it really is second to none. So, uh, please tell Rich especially. Um, okay, uh, Utah League of Cities and Towns is coming up in September. It's the fourth and fifth, which is a Wednesday and Thursday. Uh, right on our Chuck E. Cheese grand opening. So, um, but we need to let, uh, Ms. Marigoni know if we're planning on attending that so she can get us registered and get that, uh, early bird registration done. Save us a little money. If you're going to go down, that one's in Salt Lake. We, uh, usually don't do any lodging or anything. We just drive down to that one. I have a conflict on Thursday, so I'm going to probably just go on the fourth, but I'll make sure I clarify that with you. And the last thing, I sent an email, um, to you guys about, uh, a dinner at the Weber County Fair, a legislative dinner. The Weber County Commission hosts that. And, uh, it's usually kind of fun. Uh, hopefully, just a reminder that that's coming up. It's on a Friday night, I think the ninth, you go, they, they feed us dinner and then they, I think they're, it's not a rodeo. I think it's bull fights this year or something or bull riding. I don't know. Anyway, if you can be there, I'm planning on going. So, uh, hopefully I'll see you there. And, uh, that's all I have. So with that, we would need a motion to adjourn.
So mute.
A motion?
Second.
Add a second. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right.
No.
We're adjourned.
You gonna go to that city town? Four, both don't have to drive.
They went the raid.
Why did that stop you?
Sewer district.
Oh, yeah.
Went from. Point zero, 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 five, two, three. To point zero, 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 five, five, zero.
Is that even worth it? I guess it is a little. I mean, they get the whole county. It's not like us where we only get the city. So I guess.
And that was the other thing I was trying to, most of, I think the, that it looked like Weber School District did not, uh, no, they increased. Who didn't?